We call it order the special committee of the whole for Tuesday, November 26, 2018. So with that, do we have anything? Can we go to the order? Anything happen in the last four days?
I just wanted to make sure that everybody saw the email from Laura that the exit conference was changed from the 3rd to January 7th at the request of the auditor's office. You're staffing limitations on their end. It'll still be at the Cal and January 7th.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, so with that, I will move ahead to, we can move ahead to the one IM one hour dinner. The 2019-2020 budget bid by IM review and modification for discussion. Mr. Bailey, thank you for joining us and thank you for being here this evening. So, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm the mayor, council, no members of the audience. It's kind of a casual process for this evening, but we still do want to have structure as we go through it. About a week and a half ago, the mayor, Potom, Mike Rellington, myself, and Steve and the mayor, that was Mike Bailey, just to talk about in general what the IM looked like in his experience as a finance director with, just specifically with City of Redmond. So we got some good information from him, so what we did is that we then went back and looked at our budget and made a decision on how we were going to bring it forward internally, externally, administratively. And so we've been working on that for the last probably week and a half since we had that meeting with Mr. Bailey. We did give him the documents that you have in your packet to him as well to review. He also reviewed kind of the rolled down budget version, being met with him, and that hasn't substantially changed since he met with him a week and a half ago. So he looked at it to see if he saw anything that looked out of the ordinary, and at least at that point, he hadn't. And I'll let Mike Bailey talk a little bit more to that. But what I thought maybe we'd first do is just get some of his historical perspective in mid IM budgets, in IM budgets in general. And then Steve and I, we're going to be ready to go through. What we're going to do, we're going to talk about the budget process, and we looked back and we looked forward, and we also went through and actually looked through Springbook to see what, what was the assumption, what was the budget, what are we looking at next year to see if we're, if we're on pace and if our estimates were correct. We couldn't do that for every single budget, but we got a lot of, I think, good information on that. So I'll let you go, Mike.
Okay. Well, and I wouldn't lay the point, we've actually talked about a lot of this before, which is, I think, good. So, again, I'm trying not to repeat myself too much. I suggested, as I had in the past, that, since you're in the middle of the IM, that unless something significantly different has happened than you anticipated, then while you're in kind of this caretaking mode in between some leadership in the finance office, that it's likely that not a lot of correction needs to occur at this point. The IM, of course, is two years of budget, and so one of the things we talked a little bit about was how does that work for, like, the end of financial report? So you literally do compare two years of budget to one year's worth of activity when you do your, when you do your financial report at the end of 2019. So it will look odd because the budget will be, you know, quite a bit larger than, it seems like it needed to be, but it is still the right way to do it. That's what your reports will look like. And then in the next year, when you do the budget to actual comparison, you know, for the budget purpose, you'll look at two years of expenditures, and that's when you see, you know, budget compliance, and that's when auditors will tend to look at that to ensure that, you know, it was monitored correctly and it's like they were tentative to the sentiment, but budget amendments occurred if necessary, things like that. So, as a result, being in the middle of the IM, again, as we talked about before, it's an opportunity to tune up and improve up. And so you have things that are just a matter of course of business that, you know, you manually go in and either, you know, renew or adjust. So, you know, the best of that versus the property tax organ, that's one area at a time. And so that's an example. Some of the rates and stuff that are in the packet, again, are good examples of that. So I didn't see anything from our review through the end of September that suggested that, you know, anything needed to be done. And so what a mid IM is intended to do is just to check in, and different places do this wildly different. In Redmond, you wouldn't even know it occurred. It's so low key. It's just essentially the presentation of a court report in front of council. If an ordinance, if an amendment is appropriate, just because of the course of business, you know, again, not unlike we have here tonight, then you typically read it forward as well. But, again, as I say, there's really not a lot of mid IM budget review, you know, to be had, so to speak. Like I said, it's almost a non-IM. And on the other end of the spectrum, others, you know, make more of a, I don't know if I can make the right word, that doesn't create a connotation, but spend more time and energy, kind of looking through things, you know, does the plan still seem like it's what we anticipated it would be in a few years out? And so re-familiarizing yourself with all of it. So, all that said, I think, you know, what we had talked about and what this appletist put together is certainly going to serve this purpose well. And as we go through, I'm glad to be answering the questions, or, you know, providing the other advice, you know, that can, so feel free.
Does council have any early questions for Mike Bailey?
Ready? Okay, now let's turn it up.
So I'll just, we'll go ahead and start, and we actually are also, not that it's important, but we're also logged in Springbook, so if we have questions, we can, like, really look at some stuff along time. We're hoping not to go too far in, you know, into those details, but if we need them, then there's a quick question, we can do that. What we'll do is, like, if we can't answer a question that council has, then we'll take it, and then we'll come back at the next meeting, we'll probably honestly also send out a email so that we can get it to you as early as possible. So what we did, between Steve and myself, is we did just kind of an overall big review, and we knew that the direction of council was, let's not make any big changes, let's make sure that we're not, you know, necessarily today doing any adjustments or amendments. That can happen next year if they're needed, and once we bring in a finance director, we can thoroughly go through that, but right now, we're on budget. So this budget review doesn't include any adjustments or any amendments. We did have to kind of look back to look forward as well as we were going through the analysis. We looked at what the assumptions were for 2019, and we have kind of some of the big highlights, so obviously, we always want to look at the salaries and benefits because those are a large part of any of our funds. So, the assumption in 2020 was a five, essentially a 5% COLA, and we know that we are not going to have that. And that leads me to, we updated exhibits E, F, and G in your packet are the updated pay classifications. So exhibit E, which is our non-union, is a 2.08 cost of living increase. Exhibit F is our FOP, and that is done by contract, it's a 2.8% COLA. And then our Teamsters contract, which is exhibit G, that is a 2.08% increase. So we crosswalked that. We should probably see some cost savings out of that. Steve and I looked at a handful of budgets across, mostly the general fund, we also looked at utilities, a couple of facilities as well. And so we're comfortable knowing that we're within budget. We also looked at benefits. We looked pretty good there. We assumed a 5% budget increase for 2020, and we're not going to see those, that's not what we got back from EDC for benefits. So that's good, too. We're going to see a cost savings there. There was no increase in our package there. The only increase that we saw was Delta Dental, and I think there were one or two employees around Delta Dental. So that's, okay, so that's, that's pretty good news. So that should help Curie's over and to remain on budget. We also looked at retirement. Retirement comes out July to July, that's when we get that information. So it was budgeted at 4.5% for our left and 12.83 for hers.
She said the backwards.
Sorry, it's the backwards.
By point four.
By point four. So we are within budget because that's what was budgeted. We won't know the next increase or decrease until July, and that's when we'll have to relook at it. Some things that we did look at that we want to continue to monitor is our state share revenue is under budget, and, you know, we're not exactly sure why, except for we definitely know that our motor vehicle excise tax dollars continue to kind of trail off, so we'll need to continue to watch that. Because I think that can be volatile at times, so we're going to continue to watch that. We also were looking at expenditures. Expenditures are tracking to budget, but we just, we continue to be vigilant on that as we move forward into 2020. Property taxes are coming as expected. However, we did notice that as those dollars are being received in, technically, they all go to the general fund, but a portion of it is the levy lift, which is for the SRO, our park, and IT. So that's a separate batch of money that we have to obviously put into those programs. And then we have the remaining property tax that comes in, and 80% of that goes the general fund, and 20% of it goes to roads. And that wasn't correctly put into Springbook, so that needs to be adjusted. So when Megan comes back, she'll be looking at that. I think those were some of the highlights. Sales tax is tracking to what was budgeted. Obviously, we'd like to see it higher because we trend it higher historically, so we do really need to start to watch that to see if it's, you know, if we're going to stay within budget, or if we're going to see kind of increases that we saw in years previously. Maybe just a couple more things, and this goes into our workshop from last week when we discussed the budget. What we've done is we've prepared an ordinance to move forward, and we'll have some exhibits. So what we took is our original budget that we have now for 19 and 20, and looked at what these exhibits were to the ordinance. So that's why you have, you see this document, which is basically a rolled up budget, so it's not line by line. We also gave you a line by line budget as well, if you wanted to see that, and then to see where we were at here to date. So we updated that, and then there's exhibits within there that we've also updated. So you'll look at, we look at revenue expenditure summaries and what the changes are, and then budget versus actual revenues. So we did meet with the finance committee last week, and they gave us, you know, a lot of really good information and questions and things to think about as we're, as we're moving forward. I'm not sure who is technically the note. I can't remember.
No.
So do you want to just talk about maybe a summary of kind of the conversation we had? I'm sorry, did not have to even advance to, like, put you on the spot, but you don't have to. In general, anybody from the finance committee can kind of talk about what their expectations and concerns were, the questions that they had for staff. Just give it a minute. I'm sure we could.
Yeah, I submitted the minutes, but it was midday today, so it's fine. But, and everyone should get these things, so I'll just go over them really quick. So the first thing, the mayor was there for the first, maybe 10 minutes, and other than that, it was myself, Dorothy.
Can I call you by your first name tonight? It's Stephen, Laura, I'm sorry.
It's the Cal. So, first, Mayor Flander gave us the finance director update, and she had just mentioned that when the director arrived, she would, well, I don't know if it was a preference, it was just she was going to set up that if any council member needed to contact, have a question, it had to go through the mayor's office if you had a question for the new director. And, so that was, I don't know if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, part of, there's multiple reasons, not the least of which, is she's going to be swapped when she gets here. She needs to be able to focus on going for her books, getting used to our systems, everything else. Additionally, coming from Wyndham, in their city, nobody contacts anybody but the city manager, and then it gets filtered down. So I want to make sure that she doesn't get beharded right off the bat, and that I can also understand what questions she's receiving, and make sure that we can help her get answers to things if she doesn't know where to find it, et cetera. So it's really just to help manage her workload, to help make sure she's off to a good start. And, you know, there are maybe questions that come in that the department director can answer better than the new finance director, too. So making sure we're getting that transition to be smooth for her. So it's going to be a pretty steep curve. I've heard nothing but fantastic things from people at Wyndham about her, so I have no doubt that she'll catch on quickly, but we've got a lot of big projects going on, you know, administratively in council eyes, that we'll need to make sure she can focus on so we can keep moving forward. And honestly, the next IM budget will be here before now. So the more work we can get her and her department done early, the better off we'll be set up for that mid IM, or the new IM budget process.
So I'm not going to go over every line item, I'll just, and by the way, there was no objection from us at the meeting, but the one thing in hindsight I thought about was, would she still be attending meetings if she was available?
Oh, yeah. You know, she'll be going to finance meeting, I mean, yeah, it's just a matter of, like, that day to day, like, unexpected, if she's in the middle of a project there, you know, she may feel pressured to respond right away. We want to make sure we set up that appropriate boundaries and expectations as well, so great.
So the other thing that was more of a, kind of a theme of our conversation, was just looking at the different positions that are open, how they've changed, how suggestions to change them, and just that feels like there's a lot of moving pieces, and then we also have the discussion of potentially trying to bring back, bring back a city administrator, and just that those feel very tied together, all these moving pieces that have to do with staffing. And so that's something we wanted to discuss as a full council, potentially. The other thing that we noticed, looking more at the details, is that most of our tax revenue, which is our ongoing revenue, hopefully not all of it, some tax revenue is construction, it's going to go away if the economy changes, but a lot of our revenue was more flat, a lot. It's leveling out, and there's several reasons for that. Sales tax, there've been a lot of changes in the law, and the economy's really strong. So we've seen two factors really allow our sales tax to go up more rapidly than you would expect. And I suspect that we will see a leveling off of that as the tax laws are fully implemented, and that, I mean, it's not likely that the economy will continue on this streak. So we are seeing leveling off. Utility taxes are lower, and there are reasons for that, weather dependent, people are being more energy efficient, using less water, there's all kinds of reasons, I think, that the increase, and normally you would think that if our rates for paying for utilities had gone up, that we should see at least that much more in revenue, but that's not always true. It could be offset by other factors like weather, or just more energy efficient. And then...
Or could water meters.
Right, maybe. Although then you'd think we would have a lot more water usage, unless that's...
Or just not counting.
Yeah, oh, that's worse.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll see. I mean, it's really too early to tell if this is a trend or there's another circumstance affecting it. And then property taxes, we saw a pretty big increase when we put the levy in, and now we're back to just that slow and steady 1% guaranteed, and if we have new construction, we might get lucky to have as much as a 3% increase. But we all know our expenses are increasing a lot faster than that. So if we have leveled off utility taxes, leveled off, or declining sales tax, if we hit some kind of, you know, the economy changes, and property tax. So those are our main funding sources, and I think, as we were looking through it during the finance committee meeting, I think there was a concern that we may not be able to afford long-term all the positions we might want, and could justify. We can justify them that it's a need. I don't think anyone's going to argue that we can justify the need. The problem is, you have to also prove ongoing revenue to pay for it. And so that was a topic of discussion that I just, you know, I think Dorothy and I both felt very strongly that when you do an analysis, you don't just look at the need, justifying the need, you have to show that you have ongoing revenue. And so, that is what we talked about. Oh, I requested that we have listed at some point, I was hoping we can have it as part of this, just a little side note, just what are the outstanding budget amendments that have already been presented, or what in the back of, you know, all the directors' mind are like, "Well, we mentioned this might be a budget amendment." It feels very hazy right now. We haven't had any budget amendments since first quarter, and we've been hearing about decisions that we've made that either for sure are going to require a budget amendment or might. You know, we've, several salary scale, you know, different things have changed. And I have a very difficult time understanding how that's going to affect the budget going forward, and if we do need to do some kind of course correction. So it, I'm still unclear if that can be provided. It sounded like both directors felt like they had a handle on it on their side, but don't have anything to give to us.
Right.
So, and the other thing that was requested during the meeting is there's a big spreadsheet that has all the salary and benefits, and is able to calculate what our liability is for salary and benefits for a given year. It puts in the step, the medical costs, everything. It's a really cool spreadsheet. And what I really felt like I wanted to understand is what is our salary and benefit liability for 2020? Do we have enough remaining budget? Because right now, we're just trying to track, oh, you know, 9/24ths of a year is 37.5, we'll be on track for that. Well, yes, we are on track for that. But we know everything's going to get more expensive next year, and we're adding positions. So just saying we're on track right now made me feel very nervous because we know everything's getting more expensive next year. There's step movement. The other thing is, we used a lot of contracted work for open positions this year. You know, that's going to change next year if we start filling them. That was a big concern. It doesn't sound like that spreadsheet can get updated, so I feel a little nervous that we don't have a complete handle on what our salary li, and benefits liability is for next year.
I suppose if all those projections were done, the 20, 52-year budget was based on the COLAs, increase in benefits, step increases and what have you. So the entire IM budget was modeled based on that shift.
I, that is true, but we don't know where on pace should be. That is the point. We know we budgeted for it, but have we used more than budget and aren't going to have enough left for second year? We don't know.
I think, on some of those...
That is what we don't know. We have made staffing changes and decisions of moving, adding things, changing things.
On some of those, I think staff can probably answer, department directors can probably answer in regards to their home departments. I know Steve's been tracking closely, Curie's been tracking closely. On some of the budget amendments that we had talked about in the past, for example, overtime for the storm that we were hoping would be a federally declared disaster, but it ended up being too isolated to receive that declaration, departments haven't been able to absorb that within their existing funds. So most of that, as of today, doesn't look like we're going to have to amend, which is a huge, a huge accomplishment for the departments, but we will see. So I know that Steve's keeping track of his future amendments, but as we started this process, I know that we wanted to make sure we got the mid IM review done, which is statutory, get the finance department director in, and start tackling those things specifically before we do any actual changes to the budget.
I think the concern is that it's been absorbed, but what really happened is we're using up next year's expenditures, the salary we need for next year because changes will happen. I guess that's the concern. That's, I'm just going to end my finance committee report unless someone else has something to say, because I don't want to get into discussing, I just wanted to let you know what we discussed.
I was just going to end, one of the things we discussed, which was the, the cost recovery through fee issue. And, and through their research, trying to, no, I'm going to, trying to determine how the fees had been set before, what was in them, what was not, and recalibrating them so that things that may have been adjusted out get put back in. And then a second part of the cost recovery discussion had to do with ongoing thing within council, which is that, again, it's part of this, there's things that we like to have, there's things that we need, but we may not always have the resources for those things. And so how are we going to approach inevitable changes? How are we going to manage community expectations as things change, and we can no longer provide everything they think they should receive?
Thank you. So the last, number four item I forgot to mention, we did discuss the accountant position recruitment, and contemplating whether we have the funds to move that to a full-time position with benefits, that there's a $50,000 per year impact. And the question is, of all the needs that we have, is moving that position to full-time, it might make other priorities impossible. And so we need to take those things into consideration. And as council members, we didn't recall giving consensus that we wanted to move forward on that, and so we just wanted to make sure there was clarification on that of what direction administration was taking. I didn't know that we thought consensus...
So it is an administrative decision within our existing FTEs, so I'm welcome for feedback, but I will do what's right for the city and for the department. So if it means, if we do need to get somebody in full-time, get the right person and get that department right-sided, then I'm willing to take that step within my authority. And the staff has reviewed the code and believe it's within my authority within our existing FTE account to move that direction, and if that's what we need to do to get the right person in, I'm going to do it. So I was looking for, at the last meeting, I asked for any objections or council feedback, and I've received them. And there was interviews...
Steve, I hear you asked for that, I'm sorry.
Huh?
I did not hear you ask for that.
I did.
I, that would be adding more FTEs than we have, so you would not say, I don't understand.
There's an opportunity to add that.
It's not a benefit position. I guess I'm really unclear about, you know, what's the point of council, like? I don't understand.
So the, so the mayor has the opportunity to adjust the other FTEs within the budget. So an example is, we have a vacant position within the planning department, and so the mayor can take FTE count from there.
That's a much lower paid position, and so that would have an ongoing impact of a much higher position.
So, for example, what she's getting at, so... So for example, what she's getting at, so our previous administrative assistant, Bree, left for another city and we internally determined that Laura needs planning assistance more than we need policy assistance right now. And so we are, will now be hiring that associate planner position instead of the administrative assistant position. And the code allows you to reclasser within positions as long as you have a budget for it. And your total FTEs do not go over what's allocated for the fund.
So, okay. Council member.
Oh, I was, I was just going to say that an overarching, the overarching situation is the city does not have long-term projections that give us a clear indication of where our path is going to lead us financially. And since we don't have that, we are making incremental decisions without full calculation of what that's going to mean beyond 2020. And so that was something that was, I felt, I mean, I, I was listening more, since I was a part of the last budget process, I was listening more at the committee meeting. And to me, that was the ongoing theme or challenge, challenged theme is that, you know, unlike some places, we don't have that long-term path scoped. And so you could make a decision today and not really know how that is going to be a multiplier for financial problems in the future. So, and I think the responsibility we have with this budget is to, when we look at where we are, make some, have at least a pretty solid discussion about not just 2020, but 2021. So, you know, whatever decision, I mean, that's, that was really the nexus, I think, in the, in the committee meeting. It's not just, you know, where we are for 2020, but where is that going to leave us at the end of 2021?
Thank you. Do you have any council members have a?
Along that same, I did have something I wanted to say about our quarterlies, but that can be at a different time. I guess along the lines of future for the city. I was reading something that you wrote, Mike Bailey, in the MRSC 2020. It's called the 2020 Budget Suggestions. And you wrote about the economy and the future. And I don't know if you can enlighten us in what you're seeing? Because if I look at our future and if our revenues are staying like this and our expenses are going like this, I'm very concerned about 2021, 2022. And reading up on what's happening in Mercer Island, it's very concerning that we could be in that same boat in 2021, 2022.
Well.
Yeah, and they're bedroom community. They have a lot more money, of course, in their community than we do probably. But it's still a bedroom community. So I'd like your input on the economy.
Well, as I said in the article, it's, it's, it's changing all the time, of course. And so the, what was happening at that point, there was a fair amount of erratic behavior in the stock market. And the bond market was behaving in a sort of way, whatever else. So it, it was indicating a contraction. In other words, not a, not a recession, but volatility as you peak. That's what the signals were at that point in time. Since the Fed floor federate and the economy has kind of re-engaged again. So since that update, which is now about a couple of months old, we've, we're seeing indicators that the economy continues to prolong. The latest I read, which was earlier today, is that they're forecasting a lower rate of GDP growth for next year, but continue to grow for the next couple of years. If the labor market continues to be so tight as it is, it's actually now a constraint. Usually you're hoping for economic growth so that the labor market can be energized. And now the labor market is so energized that that's constrained on more growth. People just can't find employee, in quality employees. It's very true of local government, isn't it right? And so, so all that to say this, I'm working with Mercer Island on this very issue. And, and because a lot of local governments are dealing with the same problem. And I think your plan of developing a long-range view is the right approach. And certainly that's, you know, what we've always recommended, but it's even more true. As we do find, you know, plateauing, we've been able to live up to the growth that has occurred from the lot of firm development and of course improving labor market. People spend more money and we see that in various forms. In our revenues as well. That, that's all plateauing. So, so it is leveling out. And as a result, costs will continue to do what they do. And in fact, you know, as you look at labor rates and CPI, I think through that sort, it probably have grown, you know, more so the last couple of years than earlier on in this economic cycle. They're working to catch up. And, and so it's really a good time to be thoughtful. And, and the right thing to do is put along, together a long-range financial plan. And I, I know the person that you are going to be working with and I think she's going to serve you very well in that respect. And again, as I said, I think that with respect, it's good to be diligent and careful. Those are obviously, you know, good things. I'm also working with other communities that aren't so diligent and careful and have had trouble. So your concern, I think, is well-placed, having said that. Again, you are in the middle of a biennium. I, I think that you do have some breathing room. And, and you'll have some opportunity to, to create your own, you know, soft landing, so to speak, as you go forward. A couple of things that occurred to me from the conversation I've heard thus far, you know, really speak to the opportunity for council to work with you, finance director and the mayor in terms of developing policy around these kinds of things. You know, for instance, being clear about when authority to incur more expenses that will show up later in a budget amendment. How, how do you be clear about that, really clear about that? So everybody has the same understanding of what we've tentatively agreed to. Is, is one opportunity, the long-range planning. Using the same sort of criteria or prioritization that you use as you deliberate over the budget itself, which is a big deal, right? We spend lots of hours deliberating over the budget. And, and I, and I've recommended, and in fact, have in place of our word, the council has put in, into their policy that that same rigor would apply to amendments as well, right? Because it's easy when somebody comes in after the budget's adopted and things are going pretty well to come up with a great new idea. And next thing you know, you know, it's pretty easy to commit to something that probably wouldn't have gotten the support if it had been subjected to the same level of rigor. So those are just a couple of things that, as I'm listening to your conversation, that you might think about as you go forward. But as I said, there's some patience, you know, it's probably in order because you will, you will have somebody here who can help you with those things very soon. And that person will be overwhelmed by staff coming to them and asking questions, let alone others. And so, and so I think, again, that's, that's a little key point, as you've already mentioned as well. So those are my, my thoughts as I've listened to the conversations. Thank you.
I just have a question in regards to the finance department. So we have one person now.
Correct. Well, technically two, Stephanie's and Jolene's.
So, because I know we lost the whole department at one point. So I was just wondering, can this one person do all that?
No. So the only reason that position was not full-time previously is because the person that occupied that position didn't own it full-time. And so that's the only reason that position wasn't full-time, as far as the historical perspective I can provide. We have cost statements with the new director. There's statements also in the budget that have been realized as well. We have two people that are qualified that will be interviewing for the job. One of whom has expressed that they're only interested if the position goes full-time and that person is highly qualified. And so, you know, having that flexibility and pretty much all of our issues for the last two years have surrounded money and finances. So to me, it is one of the most important investments I can make as mayor for our taxpayers, our council, to make sure we have the right staff in that department. And I believe strongly that if I have that flexibility within my authority, then I need to do what's right for the city and it might be uncomfortable and hard to start with. But we are not going to move, be able to move beyond these financial conversations unless that department is up to speed and in order, and we're not going to get policies done unless it's staffed appropriately. That's the bottom line. So I'm frankly pretty tired of having ongoing discussions, having been in this city now for 10 years. Things have been rehashed every year for the last 10 years and we want to be on that and move the city forward and having a solid finance department. And particularly, hopefully, a finance department that is consistent. Department-wide for several years is critical to moving new financial policies and what have you forward.
Just a point of clarification. Will you be coming forward with your proposal on a city administrator?
I'm updating the job description now. So as I've expressed to council members that I've talked to individually, my plan at this point, and I'm going to preface this with, part of the reason we are so tight in our budget for the two-year budget is because we put the maximum amount of savings in all of our accounts contingency reserve. We created new reserve funds. So when we, if our revenues stay where they're at, moving or slightly above when we move into the next biennium, we should have more funds available because we're not spending that savings. So even with inflation escalation and adding money in the contingency fund, the statutory amount or our statutory amount will go up likely in that next biennium. The amount of money that we're diverting to those savings pots will be significantly smaller unless we dive into them. So I am relatively confident that, that we will have, be able to find the support for a city administrator. And part of what I'm updating, as I've talked to people individually, is that we need more than economic development, human resources component. And some, whoever comes in needs to have a large focus on human resources. I've heard that in X amount of views from staff and staff in individual conversations. And a lot of our internal issues definitely result from a lack of consistent HR or knowledgeable HR. And so my intent at this point is, you know, as we've got the time, updating the job description. And then what I intend to do is come to act council and ask for formal approval and recruiting for the position before we do the budget amendment, because you don't have to hire. You can go through the process. You don't have to hire it already. But I think it's critical that we begin the process now because we need somebody in place, no later than June. And we have, I think, three or four cities surrounding our area that have lost their city managers or city administrators to other cities over the last couple of months. So recruiting is going to be very difficult.
So regarding the city administrator, because we haven't had a new budget, and I'm just not understanding how that, it's such a big salary. How will we get it back into the budget, a for it opportunity forever? I'm not really understanding when I look at the current budget, how that's going to work.
So first of all, Mary to have her savings, that we, it wasn't budgeted, it's not there. Second of all, if we get somebody in, we're going to be lucky to have somebody in by June. That's plenty of time for Dana and the new senior accountant to be analyzing the budget. Starting to look at potential revenue predictions for the next two years and looking at areas for budget to bring it in. But we are, there's no more room for administration to stretch. And we are going to break if we don't get some additional assistance in, in an up to distant future.
Council member.
I'm really confused. I think I heard you just say that you can, you can put out dealers for a job without us budgeting it?
No, so what I said was I'm going to update the job description and ask council for that permission.
To publish the job without having it budgeted?
It takes probably six months to recruit for the position.
Is that true? You can really do that? You could recruit for it without having our budget?
You don't have to hire.
Would that hurt us in the future though? I mean, because, for example, worst case scenario.
I'm not going to, I, I can't advertise without authority from council because the position isn't budgeted. What I'm going to be asking for is a special dispensation so that we can move this process forward. We cannot afford to be without a city administrator for another year.
We can't afford a city administrator.
I mean, we have to get additional. That's exactly what I'm going to have Dana be working on. So like I said, we need to get this process moving forward. We will figure it out.
We do not have the savings with him not being here. We paid him out through 19, 2019. There was, there were no savings. We don't have money.
The money that was supposed to be, that would have gone to city administrator, went to contingency and other reserves.
I, I. Contingency.
It did.
Do you know, do you not remember how we funded contingency? We used ending fund balance. We used up $550,000 of ending fund balance. Part of it went to contingency. We do not have ongoing revenues that are going to be freed up because we aren't putting money in contingency. That was development money that built up. It's not ongoing.
So let's just.
Also, we don't have one-year savings. We, we spent it on other things that are ongoing expenses. We don't have any revenue.
All right. So just one second. Let's all just take a deep breath real quick. Okay, well, I'm trying to. Let's all just take a deep breath here. I mean, I think, and recognize, you know, that we're all approaching instead of, you know, utmost concern, trying to do the best thing. And we're trying to understand each other, where we're coming from. And it's very frustrating. It's a, it's a process. And so with that, you know, let's kind of, I think it's appropriate that we, you know, state how we disagree. But we do have to be respectful of each other and understand that if we disagree at a point, then that's, then we just can leave it there and look for constructive ways to, to forge ahead. So. I, I definitely hear what the council, other council members are saying. And I, I too am concerned about how we fund positions and the future impacts of those positions on the future budget. And I'm not totally sure of the, of the process of new positions or dormant positions. Or it's just a little confusing. I'm a little confused with, with positions that are not staffed or, or were, were reclassed at some point, but I guess the original position stayed in existence. I'm not sure how that fits into the, you know, moving forward, you know, you know, with filling those positions. And it's something that I think we should get a better handle on. And I think it sounds like something that is something that can be addressed with policy, but it's also something that I think we need to have a better understanding of. And it causes concern. And I think that that's a very healthy perspective to take. Because I think on that perspective, you could say, there is, there is a city administrator. And if we just move a bunch of budget things around, we could fund it because it's there and exists.
No, you can't, you actually can't do that in the current budget process, in the current policies that we have. So no, I would not be able to, to move funds around and move things around to just fill that position.
So because I, because it seems as though there's some.
And it was.
Positions that, there's some positions that are historically have not had, they're vacant. And, and so therefore they're not budgeted. And I guess that's the thing. I'm just trying to understand how that works. I don't know. I'm not sure how that process works in other cities. It does seem as though from the outside, if a position's vacant or it's not funded to a full FTE, then, then it's not, then it hadn't been budgeted. But I'm not arguing the point that it's not the good idea to do. I'm just saying that's a very genuine thing for folks to be like, whoa, like. Because we are, because I think it's that concern of like, there's a lot of things moving around. And, and coupled with the concern of revenues coming in. So, and we're looking for our role to constructively, you know, create checks and balances to ensure that we don't. to ensure that we don't incrementally make a larger bad decision, so.
So.
Councilmember, please proceed.
So I just asked a question because I just want to understand, I'm not saying everyone's making bad decisions here. How, if I do agree, we do need a city administrator. We worked so hard to get there, and that didn't quite work out. And so I think going forward, we do need a city administrator. My question, though, is when we look at this budget, can there be sort of modification to amend, to sort of create some place to start funneling funds to get ready for the next time we have a city administrator?
I think being creative when we have a qualified finance director in place starting next week, I think there's lots of ways to do it. Part of the reason the position was not successful last time is because administration went to departments and told them they needed to cut budgets and cut, or cut staff. Is the stories that I've been told consistently, which set up a very bad environment to begin with for the city administrator coming in, which, considering we're still well below staffing levels of what we were twenty years ago, is a really tough pill to swallow for folks. So my intent, working with Dana, would be to find the revenue sources without damaging existing staff levels and providing that relief for directors that are sharing the job to go back to their normal duties, especially as, for example, we're about to get, you know, a slew of building permits in, and we need to provide some relief to those employees.
I have two questions, I just wanted to follow up on one thing that councilmember Hook said about the advertising before having budget in there. So I was just curious about that. If, for example, worst-case scenario, we did that process and then it really didn't get budgeted or filled, does that set a bad precedent for our city and future recruitments?
I don't think so, and here's why. If you think about the finance director position and the senior account position, we've gone out for both of those twice now. On the second round, we finally, we found a finance director and we found a senior accountant. We had people apply for the position, and in fact, we had somebody go through backgrounds for the finance director the first round, and that person went through. So there are opportunities at both ends. And in the unique situation of city administrator, city administrator does require council confirmation and contract. So that fact alone means I cannot hire a city administrator without affirmative vote of the council. And so you could, I could even have, you could approve the position in the budget, and I can have my choice, and you guys could choose not to confirm. So ultimately, the ultimate decision on that position ends up residing with council. My concern is the level of stress that's currently on our existing staff and waiting several more months to start a process that we already know is going to take months, and we're a year and a half into having two people share the role. And recognizing that we have significant HR needs. We have discussed internally about potentially, what if we just hire an HR manager? Well, it's going to cost us about the same. So the solution right now, the most logical solution right now for what's needed in City Hall and what's needed for the city is to bring somebody at city administrator level with HR background and experience and have that person be the go-to HR person in managing directors.
Yeah, I don't know that anyone disagrees with that. I think it was more just like, would it hurt us if, man, we found this person we really liked, but oh, we never got through and got the money for that, so now we have to say sorry.
By the time we get to the interview process, I don't think a single one of us would waste time on an interview unless we're ready to have a budget appropriated at that point. Because that would be a waste of our time, and we don't have time. But as far as getting things ready to go and starting the process, I think it's, that's not a waste of time if it means that we can get somebody in three months earlier.
I have one more quick one, if that's okay. So kind of stepping back to the accountant going full-time. I remember you talking about that, I don't remember you asking for feedback, I'm sorry. But I do think, I thought you said that you also wanted to try and keep the other positions that were vacant, like, to fill them as they were. So you're talking about having the authority to do that, like, are you saying that you might want to amend the budget in the future to afford those, or are you saying you actually have flexibility financially to afford to all those?
Right, as it stands now with an existing code, I have authority to move around the FTEs within the funded positions, but you don't, can't go above that amount. So if, if that's where we had to go with the accountant, then I would have to take a look at some other areas. And there's other areas Laura and I have talked about, places that are not as painful to move around if we need to do that. But part of the problem, our biggest issue right now, again, is the finance side and making sure that that's solid. Because every decision that this council makes is being hinged around finances, and that is critically important.
And just for clarification really quick, when you talk about FTEs, you're not just talking about headcount, you're talking about financially? Because obviously, some positions are paid more than others. You're talking about the money allocated.
I'm talking about headcount, because when you look at salary, if your overall salary is within the fund, stay within the budget of what's allocated, you're fine. Just like any other fund. So, for example, you know, if you have a department that put off one project to do another project that came up urgently, decided not to do a budget project for the one that got, for either one, you only have one project getting done, and it stays within the budget. So that's the goal. And we do know that there's been cost savings in other areas.
How do you envision, how do you envision establishing a work plan that has the consensus of council moving forward for 2020? My department. That's such that we would have verifications and a series of milestone dates by which we could measure our progress and determine if we are on a path that we cannot sustain?
So our departments created two-year work plans last year. We're in the middle of those work plans now. We'll be meeting at the beginning of the year to review those work plans, and we'll bring that information back to council. The work plans are currently set for 2019 and 2020. But we need to look ahead to as priorities for the 21, 22 budget. Our priorities are set, besides statutory, by the budget that's passed. And so that's, that's where the opportunity is. So we will be bringing forward the updates to our work plans after our staff meeting. But council can, of course, amend the budget and make directives, but as I've stated multiple times before, statutory obligations are going to be coming first.
Well, to clarify, are we going to get a report on the completion of last year's work plan before we are expected to move forward on the budget?
It is a two-year work plan. There are no budget amendments being requested. This, staff does not have those ready at this time.
I see.
And so this is a review, there are no changes being made. And your numbers are telling you a big story right there.
Okay.
What story are you telling?
We are on track. At this point, we are on track, we are living within our means. Directors, do you have anything to add?
I want to try and get us back on the budget discussion.
I think.
But I'm, do you want me to finish?
No, I think there's a discussion more in the middle of, middle of a pretty poignant discussion regarding the staffing. And I think, I think we should close it as a council in terms of, before we move on. You know, I concur with many of the points that my fellow councilmembers have made in terms of where previous funds have come from. I am concerned with the, some of the shifting. Like I said, I'm not totally familiar with that. I want to do some more research and find out about how FTEs change and how they're managed. And I think the conversation about the city administrator, I think that plan, I respectfully don't think that that's, would be a good path forward to kind of put it out there first and try to budget for it later. And the reality of the revenue that we have is the reality. I mean, it's, unless we propose new revenue sources, or so. But I think generally, what I'm hearing is that folks are concerned with changes in FTEs and how that's affect, how that's going to affect future budget. I think that's just what we're trying to, what sounds like many, many of the folks in the council are trying to relay. So.
And to be clear, I don't come forward without sharing those concerns and analyzing those concerns internally as well. So as mayor, as the chief executive of the city, every decision and mistake, whether it's council-led or internal, falls on me. So I bear the full weight of that responsibility legally and publicly.
Could, now that we discussed that point, could, I think, your current staff from Liz Thomas?
So I want to, I have a whole bunch of these that I'd like to address, as much as we can, but staying on the topic of budget. So as far as our work plan, we do have active work plans. They are adopted as part of the biennial budget. We normally would come back to council right now and get those updates, but directors, Steve and myself, are being pulled to budget. So we had to say, do we work through if the budget moves forward? Or do we cover present our work plan to date and where we're at and moving forward? So I just wanted to address that. The plan was, if we had a finance director or somebody in that end of the position, we were all scheduled to come in to council in November and December to do that. And so that, I just want to make sure that council understands.
And to be clear, I think I've had individual conversations with most people in this room about what was going on in August and September on that front, and what the outcome of that was. It's not really appropriate to be talking about in public session. So if you want to have those conversations again, I'm happy to refresh my notes.
So I'll continue to move on. So staff will go back and talk just in general, and probably like being with our attorney, just to make sure that we can move forward with the position as unbudgeted. We'll just do a double check on that, because I heard concern here, and we can do that. I'll leave alone on the positions that are unfilled or vacant in the city administrator, because we really do want to try to focus on the mid-biennium budget. Those are conversations that we need to bring forward, but they really need some work by a fin, you know, somebody in finance other than Steve and I trying to run numbers for council. I do want to say, based on the finance committee's meeting, that, you know, when we talked about tax level in our construction and tax, one time it was utility tax, so all these staff need agree that we need to continue to, you know, to watch those and work with those trends moving forward. We really do want to try and find some time to be able to bring that budget amendment slash adjustment list forward. I don't know that we'll be able to do it between now and next week when we have, when we have the hearing, but I, I think we probably could bring at least what we have that we, that we work on with Amy and Santos before Sheila. We also, one of the items, and it didn't come up, but we talked about it in the committee, was paying our debt payment, to know where, where are we bringing money out of to pay those debts coming forward? So we're going to do that. Or we could not find it in any of the budget documents or in any spreadsheets. So we need to continue to do that work. We might actually have to go back and listen to council meetings from three or four years ago. In general, we know where we're supposed to get the funding number of projects between, you know, REIT and Park Impact fee or no, but we want to have, we want to have better concrete information. So we need, you know, we need to come back and do that. We have given a really wide update to the billing rate. That's something that the committee was very concerned with, and we honestly, we are as well, because this helps us be cost recovery, right? It helps us to bring in the money that we're actually spending. There are quite a few assumptions in that spreadsheet, so that's one of the items that's on the list for us to have a finance director look at. So we did just some basic assumptions and increased marginally what the billing rate is now. It doesn't mean that we can't come back in the first or second quarter and adjust that, so I wanted to make sure that we talked about that. The one challenge that we definitely, that Steve and I cannot do for council, probably ever, for the most part, except for that we are inputters into revenue and expenditures, because we do estimates every year of building permits and engineering and revenue looking forward. And we try to even look at building trends three or four years out. So we are part of it, but we don't necessarily create, you know, kind of create that model. So we do know that moving forward, we need to look at our revenue and expenditures. And that, that hasn't necessarily been consistently done over the last probably five or six years. It's kind of been a start and stop. So we do need, we don't, we do need to go back and do that. I think, Steve, you were looking at some actual budget numbers. So we're, I'm going to let Steve talk a little bit about some of the questions that we have, where we want to pull numbers while council is having a discussion.
So I know we talked at the committee about some of those items. So yes, personally, I'm tracking what we said, and I'm working on a memo to corroborate the past actions relative to costs incurred and then relative to budget. There isn't anything, in my opinion, out of the ordinary. We've approved every contract, we haven't changed any contracts, all that council actions. You know, utilities are a little different, any fund balances there. There are other projects we're not getting to, so there doesn't technically need to be any adjustments. But again, working in a memo, you know, I understood, and we all want to have that. It's just money sits in a binder, and every time we have an action, it just goes in the binder. So it's there. We weren't able to get into the master spreadsheet, and I can't vouch for all of it, but I can get into all of it to a level of comfort and the simple questions asked and then answered. So one, do we think the money for nineteen with salaries and bumps and COLA, and the money for twenty with salaries, bumps and COLA was present in the map? From what I can tell, the answer is yes. Assumptions were such that we had five percent for the adjustments for medical, which ended up being zero for twenty twenty. You had payroll with fact-finding on COPS was two point six or two point eight, because it was in agreement, it was in the budget, it was in the spreadsheet. Five percent was in COLA, which when you roll it into the ten-year average, is a two point three. Well, when you do the actual COLA, you know, the ten-year average is two point oh eight. So there's point two-two, yeah, right, yeah, point two-two percent savings in how it was created. Taking those numbers and looking at each department, yes, some are higher. Planning is at, tracking act. But that was one of the only ones we found that was tracking act. And the rest are tracking well under. And then rerunning numbers and taking that two point three, which was budgeted, using that five in the map for two point three in COLA and wages, and adding in five percent across the board for bumps, I couldn't get the half to be higher than the budget. Does that make sense? So those were reasonable throughout the utilities, street fund. A couple we checked in Jennifer, the parts zero zero one fifteen, as well as Big Rock. I would say Big Rock by those projections was the tightest, because it's probably the smallest. But yet again, the expectation on salary expenditure relative to budget. And I made someone else look at it, too, she had her glasses. Looked reasonable.
It's in the sparkly ones also.
And the estimation that was in the spreadsheet on, and I know you all can't see it from here, this is the one that this map one is speaking about. It's, I have it hidden here with breakdowns. But it is, it has all inputs. It has left rate at a lower set of five point four three, it actually is going to be five point three three. It had twelve point eight three for hers, it's actually twelve point nine three. So it's a tenth here, tenth there, plus or minus, it's a good balance. The bigger one, too, is the benefits. That is a minimum eleven hundred per, and COPS is thirteen hundred per. Budget number estimated versus actual, because the cost incurred did not come in at five percent, it came at zero. So the same, the same benefits cost this year are the. So the same sal, the same benefits cost this year are the, this year's costing me the same connection. So those things we could see tangibly through the budget when I looked at the, where we're at in the eleventh period and where we should be in the twenty-fourth period, I mean, the last month of the two-year budget. So they did look reasonable on salaries and benefits. You know, like I said, we'll work on trying to formalize and number in the format, like what numbers we are tracking. Just for example, you know, the sewer little sheet I sent you folks, we are, you know, proud to get things down under budget. And when we're done with each project, we'll issue that kind of statement, so you can see, hey, it was a hundred percent under budget. Those are council pass numbers. Not, like that one was specific, where it doesn't match the budget, right? It's four hundred thousand dollar budget line, cuz we chose not to change the budget amount until we had the bid, and then we lost our finance group, so. Um good news is it's two-year budget and the sewer fund is strong. If I could just talk to the agenda bill uh skosh, and and it's draft agenda bills quicker than the agenda bills in the calendar, cuz she doesn't. But it's just preparing for the work ahead, so why not put it in agenda build now? The exhibits on the back, just in general, third quarter report, everybody was seemingly fine with, that was finalized, it is what it is. We're hopeful Dana has a.
We don't have to talk about it.
Dana has her own thoughts on what our report is gonna look like, so I'm sure that will be a nice uh discussion for folks in the future. The budget status, we tried to do the best we could in formatting, giving you at least a tidal sheet that you could track what each line was, giving those adjustments uh shown or the targets in percentage format. So that was what we talked about trying to provide, we were we were able to succeed to the best of our capabilities on that, even though the font is small. And this will go into what the finance director's work program is. So we did C one and C two, C two is the showing you a couple of years back relative to what we are proposing for next year. That can be a target, we wanted to get to a place where we're at least comfortable moving forward. And in my estimation, we'll probably need the lower rank item on our work plan for the new finance director. But we wanted to get something that was at least good enough that we thought council was forthcoming for, it was, you know, as high as we could justify with reasonable uh budgetary numbers inputted into them and adding some oversight from administration to that map. Uh org chart, we tried to update it to the sort abilities and what we knew. Pay classifications are set by the labor negotiated contracts. Threw the little memo in there, I wonder memorialize at least something for the CPI congregation of all those numbers. I just threw it to a pick and roll, so at least down the road, somebody knew what we were trying to do. Uh the debt table, and like Laura said, and it was asked, and I think we hopefully hit it well enough. Going with the debt table, we retired some debt last year, we have the dump truck we've had this year. We tried to make notes at the bottom and then show where the funds are coming from to go into and pay those debts. Um I didn't make note, if you didn't notice, um the wall field itself, right, is a nine-year long. The main street product is fifteen, they have different terms. And for REIT one, REIT two, streets and sewer capital, and those are property tax levied amounts are recognized. Laura was insinuating we didn't get to the details, we are not sure. I reached out to some previous staff, there should be a memo, I have not had time to locate it yet nor nor success. I talked about specifically like the streets program, how much of that payment would be eligible to use um street impact fees. So those things are in the works, at least they're documented to date now. The other item you have seen in this packet was the draft, and hopefully makes sense of all the resolutions that are out there that talk about, you know, different fees, different rates, different ways to calculate the rates. So Marissa was kind enough to put that all together and luckily we had the package listed. We do intend to bring that forward, just it doesn't change anything except the note that you've noticed. The older resolutions didn't have this, the two newer ones did, where they're, this is how we're gonna do it, and we've lost it, and we don't need to come back to council, their staff's supposed to execute the increases. Not that you can't relook at any resolution at time relative to the fees that are assessed or, you know, levied against those rates. Cost of living CPI, ENR for construction, however they are created, but all that table does now is tries to get us something, so we're not searching seven different ways to try to find and get all the rates. Uh I had some questions today on some of the debt slash CPIs and utility rates. You can calculate those, the way it is spelled out in the resolution, utility rates to our store are indexed to the two-year previous rowing average of CPI, which showing calculation in the memo was a two point eight. So that's proposed and be brought forward along with the other rates that were impact fees related, GFC related or what have you. Couple other questions on what is in the budget document, we tried our best again to surmise what is in the numbers. Uh for example, the question came out like, if we have two point eight percent increase in our utility rates, do we reflect the ten percent utility tax getting pieces of our revenue? I don't believe that's the case. Store and sewer are very fixed monthly based, there's not a lot of, they're not weather dependent, they're not consumption based, so they're pretty flat. So if you take where we're at to date, extrapolate where we're at the end of the year, multiply that by two, it's pretty close to being on. I don't think they budgeted any increase around it. They're all tracking, again, I had somebody verify, I'm sitting here, a little higher than uh expected, not by much, but again, moving forward, they seem higher, those two are fixed. So this is pretty, they're just, we're not losing houses, so we're gaining houses, and that's the utility revenue. Any other question on that end?
I have a personal question.
Sure. Uh other than that, again, I know there's a lot of, you guys are as kind of blind as I am, being new to what was done in the budget process last year, what is there, seems like the bulk of it is there, not all of it's exactly right. Again, why is one of our been trending ahead versus another, but it's fixed costs and no returning, I don't know. It's a bad number maybe, or low or or what the, other than that, like they seemed fairly reasonable. Um and luckily, they estimated high for the second year, so, but come on, two cents on that, thank you for what you're saying.
Okay, so in interest of keeping on schedule, let's.
I just had one question. What the, I know we have uh in our non-judicial future, and I don't know if you were able to get this put off for a year, but we we do have union obligations coming up in the near future. Um we were gonna see if that could get put off in the year right now, we were at least testing those waters. But in in looking at the budget, um there's no way, there's union employees all over the place. Do we uh have with, do we have a, I guess, a schedule the union employees and what their salary and benefit costs are segregated from the rest of the rest of the salary benefits information? It 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 it, this is a, this is a moving forward kind of question in a lot of ways. But um I mean, it's obviously not something you would see in a budget this way, but I would imagine there's a schedule somewhere within the accounting system that says, here's the fifty or twenty or whatever you need employees, and here's what what their rates are and yada yada. So that if we are given to future budget projections, we can look at that subset and have a an understanding of what might be happening there. Is, do we know if that exists in the system?
All in raw data is per position, so I would say yes, in in one way or another, it's there, it means that we tweak it.
Yeah, maybe, it's not like it's a separate thing that you can have, that you've got to identify.
Uh and I think too, what Laura and I were talking about today, you know, what do we send this person to do? Do we ask her to pick a peek of what's there and see if it's good enough to use, or can we just, hey, start over? I mean, I don't know, might use her to start over and track it her way, cuz she's the director now.
Thank you, Councilor Napland.
I just wanted to say thank you to both of you, because you, I mean, a lot of what you did, those are things that we needed to do for a long time, and we just, and that you were able to accomplish, you know, putting all the fees together, you know, figuring out exactly where does our debt come from, you know, where are we paying it from? These are all things that are going to set up um the next finance director when she has to come in. So I I know you've been trying to document things and I, you weren't just in the house is on fire mode. You really were trying to be systematic and doing something that could be used going forward, and I am very impressed, so I just wanna say that.
And uh yeah, definitely, that's a great note.
Just never coming out of our eyes, right?
That's a great point to, Councilor Hope, did you have one last question?
I really appreciate having these quarterly's. I am, I do have a question about page six, exhibit five is what it's called. It says fund balance reserves actual and budgeted, but the numbers on this list are not actual and budgeted, and I, I mean, they're probably all budgeted. And there's no actual column, there's no verification, which is. And like I said, future city facilities, it's been something that's really been on my mind, that we put a dollar amount in there with the potential to sell a rec center, but we never agreed to sell a rec center, so I feel like that number should be zero.
We're not sure why the previous finance director put it in the budget that way, cuz in our opinion, it should have been put there as a sale until the actual sale of the building.
So to address that really quick, part, at least a part of it, we're not doing any adjustments or amendments as as part of this process, but what we've done is kind of given out a list that we're that we're working on. That's an amendment or an adjustment that we would ask to come forward next year. It's just not something that we can go into the system. And I don't, what I didn't wanna do is break anything, having um a finance director come in. It's like, we wanted to keep the integrity of the numbers that were in there and not make any adjustments or amendments, cuz as you do that, depending on what you do, it impacts budgets all the way across. And so we just wanna make sure that we stayed true to the numbers we had and that we didn't mess anything up, because you can really change numbers. It's not necessarily with that four hundred thousand, with that one, do I have too much, and it would help us to do that? But when you do some other things, because you have FTE counts, it'll impact across multiple.
I think it's good for the council to remember that's in there, because otherwise our revenues are gonna look like they're behind. Cuz it shows that we're supposed to be making four hundred thousand, and if we don't sell it, then we're not, it's not a, it's not income, it's not. And I think it'd be nice if we could get an actual budgeted on this.
So Michelle, it is, if you take a look at the exhibit B, the second, when you flip it in order, which is the kind of low down budget line, I don't know. One of the questions that.
She's looking at the memo.
I know.
Yeah, it's how it's represented in the memo.
But at at least on page three of exhibit B, we did pull out the beginning fund balance, we showed money in, money out, or money in budgeted versus money in actual. Um and that does not reflect the revenue from any sales of fixed assets, which is the building. So that line, or at least we tried to clean up. I didn't, I tried to get into it to each fund, but then it starts to mess everything up, mess everything up. And these are not active spreadsheets, they are data dumps out of spring. So it really was kind of an act of Congress to, I mean, when we talked to the committee, I understood the point, like, hey, if we have actuals that are budgeted that aren't here, none of this stuff should one be in the income balances to see true revenue. But you can see that, that if you look at how spring work rolls this thing out, it shows you forty-four point three percent revenue is achieved. Well, if you roll out the beginning fund balances, because that weights the front end of this, you're at thirty-three twenty. So that was a a simpler one to get at, and I thought I might have did it for the utilities, since they're a little more um easy to handle.
That's the one that's on our um.
That's, it's in, it's in your packet, it's a.
Yeah, and I, it was easier, yeah.
Okay. Mike, do you have anything you wanna add?
Well, I might be in there, and Lauren and Steve were taking on this budget, it's remarkable what they did to accomplish in two weeks. So I would think we can deal with it, we're all trying to, to work on sustainable budget. Certainly, we had new positions that we, not only thought we could justify it, but they're also necessary. But there's a big difference between that, saying we have the ongoing, this is corporate budget position. So I don't have the purpose all to allow the finance director to come on forward, give her time to assess the budget, gain understanding and how things have been operated, and and let her come to us and provide us with insight. It doesn't have to be during the mid-bid, she can certainly do that sometime in the first of the year, and we can ask out these important statements on on new FTEs or existing positions in the budget that have been filled. But thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, I appreciate, oh, that's hard work, and a great job putting this together. I don't have a doubt with him.
Well, resume, uh.
Call it, Jerry, the count committee of the hall for.
Well, well, resume.
November twenty-six.
Special count committee at seven oh five, so put your, your.
Sure.
I'm a bit too modest, I said it's south, it's everywhere. So very simply, huh, where are you? Basically figured out what our net development, that's what I'm trying to say, that's all of our development revenue. Here's the pass through that just heads out, so there's an expense that people net out, like exactly what you said, first time net out, so you're trying to get just country now. So like, if you look at the last three years.
Yeah.
It's a lot, and the one people remember is, that entire amount is helping to make expenses. You have no stretch of the earth, almost is all. So this is why it's the most.
Well, yeah, you can get this for everything.
And the other thing we need to mind is, we're tracking about a great. Oh, gentlemen, money in the manner of coming out, even if we're just a tiny bit ahead, that means it's.
I'm pretending.
Oh, the expenditure, and actually, we're adding positions next year, a building position, is that. That means that we're. Using any fund amounts. Two thousand nineteen.
Their parents. Significant.
But it can apply to that efficiency problem, because we will use those revenues to make two thousand.
Well, by by nature, those rev, these kinds of revenues come in before these services get performed. So you'll have the revenue side, or as you will have incurred an obligation for form the.
They'll like you generally till they're playing fifteen or something.
So it's probably a good time.
At some point.
Appreciate you.
Not to them after.
You do it for fifteen, you're right.
I'm hard to submit, so it's, it's sit on this project for a while for whatever reason. So so those are things to keep in mind. But again, I think the secret sauce is, and I say this all the time, and you guys are in exactly the same position, is to look out down like three years or so. And and have a baseline.
I actually did that, I gave it about this much, about four or four thousand, which actually is mine in the lower years.
Okay, so we're approaching seven oh five?
Yeah, so, but but see, that'd be a good conversation.
I just wanted to just see how it's gonna be with it. I decided to meet with them, like, just like I did today, and then we'll do it. He lost some of his insurance, and he was like, I'm gonna do something with it, so it doesn't. Very wanna love.
Put your nose in that corner, right, this is the wood. So would like to call part of me, special meetings of Hummel City Council on November twenty-sixth order at seven oh five P M. Would you please rise for the flag to lead by Councilmember Nicky. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilmember Nicky, here. Councilmember Ider.
Present.
Councilmember McHenry, here. Councilmember Remington.
Here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Napland.
Here.
Councilmember Langwell.
Here.
We have a horn. And just a note for the record, Mayor President Remington is participating by phone this evening. Um so with that, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adopt this evening's council agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those please, please. Sorry, Mike, there's a little delay there, I have to forget about that. All those opposed, please say no. Um, all those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, do we have any comments from the audience this evening? Seeing none, moving on to public hearing for ordinance 2020 property tax levy. And we will now open hearing. I don't know, Lauren's supposed to- And you'll listen to that. Just keep it aye. At least that there's numbers coming up in the air right now.
So good evening, mayor and council and members of the audience. Tonight we're holding a public hearing for the ordinance on the 2020 property tax levy. It's also in your council packet under Agenda Bill AB-1974. Uh, we've done obviously a lot of work with the county. It's been a really great process to learn how this actually works as a line staff member. And that it does take, you know, about six or eight, six or eight weeks to go through the process because you get preliminary numbers and then you get final numbers. And, um, we've been really lucky. Jody and I have actually worked on this one together. And so we've learned a lot together. Our budget for 2019, 20 did assume taking the 1% fully for both years. So we knew that going in and we needed to bring that forward. In 2019, that created about an additional $16,819 over 18. Um, in 2020, uh, it was $15,140. And that's, um, 0.81% increase over 2019. We did receive our certification of assessed valuation. It's a slight change to what was in your packet because we recently received it. The total valuation is 1.46 million and change. And the valuation includes, um, the 30 million, which is the value of new construction improvements to property in 19 plus any increase in value of state assessed property. It does exclude 3.8 million, which is exempt from taxation. So that would be like this building right here as an example. So the value of the 1% property tax, so what we did is we looked at the levy basis for calculation and the, which is the limit factor, multiply that by the 1%, and that's what gives us the 1.893. And then we take that, um, with the actual regular levy and then it tells you what is that increase over, um, what does that increase for, um, look like for 2020? So it's about $15,140. Uh, we also obviously always look at new construction, which is, and refunds. And so we went through that calculation. So the new construction value for 2020 was about $43,000. And then we take the limit, um, factor levy amount, which includes the new constructions and the re-levy for the prior year's refunds. And we get that bottom number in purple and blue. And so we do add about an extra $10,000 for possible increases if there's any changes. So we don't leave any money at the table. So that's why it does look a little bit different. Uh, we also obviously have the tax worksheet. So we, you know, wanted to show you what that looks like, plus it's in your packet. And so we also wanted to look at, you know, kind of what we talked a little bit about during the budget workshop, which is what, you know, what does our, our levy look like to and what does it go to? And it includes new construction and what is the allowable levy from that? And then obviously the requested $10,000 in increase. We do always want to make sure, you know, that the toll, the toll levy, um, minus the leg, the lift, um, is a separate dollar value. And then the remainder gets allocated to the general fund and to the roads. I think the committee felt that was really important. Obviously council, you know, would in general, so does, so does staff because eventually that goes away down the road. So you just want to make sure that you look at it and it's not all combined and doesn't all go in E20. Uh, so we did want to also show you what the new levy rate was, um, and what the calculation was again. So we had to go through this several times to make sure we understood it. And it's, it's, it's interesting. Pardon me, not, I'll keep that off the record. Sorry. So it has been a fun process. So again, we wanted to show you kind of history, you know, what's the total assessed value going back to 18. So you can see, you know, we're slowly increasing our valuation. Um, but the levy rate, you know, is, is going, is going down. So that's, that is interesting. That is it for the staff presentation. But we obviously recommend that council close the public hearing and adopt the ordinance this evening because it is due to the county. So we, we do need to make sure that we make a decision.
The public hearing is now closed. Uh, or actually I should, uh, for the record, um, ask if there was anyone in the audience that would like to speak at the public hearing. For the record, there is no one else in the room. Uh, the public hearing is now closed. Uh, so we'll move on to unfinished business, Agenda Bill 19-74. Dot ordinance fixing the amount of the annual ad lorm property tax levy for the fiscal year 2020, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Um, before that, I need to also let the record reflect that Councilmember Remington is attending via speakerphone for Agenda, um, Bill AB-1974 relating to approval of that annual ad lorm property tax. Councilmember Remington, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Um, and everybody else can hear Mr. Remington as well? Great. Um, so we will go ahead and move on to discussion. Or I'm, I'm happy to enter to the motion as well.
Well, I will move to the, the dot ordinance fixing the amount of the annual add lorm property tax levy for the fiscal year 2020 for severability and establishing an effective date, AB-1974.
Do you have a second? Second. Any discussion? Any discussion from the phone, Councilmember Remington?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we have a note for their business and they are adjourned.